I'd like to call and order this regular meeting of the Raton City Commission. Could we have a roll call, please, Michael Ann?
Mayor Sagada.
Present.
Mayor Protim Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Chatterley.
Present.
Commissioner Chavez.
Present.
Commissioner Jacomo.
Present.
Alrighty. Uh, let's see what we got announcement wise. We've got all city offices will be closed on May 25th, 2020 in observance of Memorial Day. Our next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, May 26th at 6:00 PM in some form or another. We'll see where we go from there. At this time, we will take any comments from the general public, if any one has called in and would like to make a comment at this time. Okay, hearing none, we will move on to the action items. Item 5A, approval of the April 28th, 2020 regular commission meeting minutes. I understand there may be some corrections.
To my knowledge, there were two corrections submitted, uh, and those will be corrected. So with those corrections, I move to approve the minutes.
All second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as corrected. I'll, I'll mention them real quick. One was in reference to the Housing Authority Board Meeting that Lindy attended that remotely. And the one was from Laurie pointed out about the Mexico Municipal League District Meeting Call was previous Friday and that they discussed legislative session and, and that. So that's what the amendments were. Any other comments? Okay, could we have a roll call vote, please, Michael Ann?
Mayor Protim Schuster.
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley.
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo.
Yes.
Mayor Sagada.
Yes. And minutes stand approved as amended. Item B, discussion of City of Raton Fiscal Year 2021 Interim Budget. Mr. Barry.
Uh, Mayor, the thing I would like to report to the commission is that myself and city clerk have talked about where we're at on the budget and, um, I, I think that it's important that we craft an interim budget, something similar to what we would do in a normal year. And we would have to move quickly on that. And then in July, uh, work on a final budget for submission to Department of Finance Administration. Uh, so you'll recall that originally we, uh, talked about the option of really skipping this interim, uh, new budget and operating on the existing budget, extending that and then crafting a final budget. But that's, there, there are some issues with that. So, uh, just to let the commission know that, uh, we will be trying to put together an interim budget. We will schedule something for you, uh, coming up. We're really late in the, uh, in the spring to be working on an interim budget and we don't have, uh, much good guidance as far as the revenue side of that. And, uh, you'll remember in talking about this, we said that, uh, we know we're going to have some revenue shortfalls from most of the sources that we have revenues, especially New Mexico grocery seed stocks. Uh, we don't know what that budget shortfall is going to be and we don't know how long that's going to go. Uh, so I think what we're going to do is essentially, um, extend as many of those budget line items from the old budget as we can into this interim budget, uh, put some new items in the interim budget that we need for operational purposes. And I would really anticipate that after the first quarter, and it could possibly be even after the second quarter, we come back to the commission and probably look at, uh, how we're measuring up and we have better information, especially on the revenue side. Uh, and I would think that we would have some corrective measures to take. Now, uh, monthly, we do a budget adjustment resolution, which typically are, uh, minor adjustments to the budget or, uh, things like grant funds that, uh, have, have occurred during the year. Uh, but I would really think we would look at, uh,
I've joined.
We would look at things like the personnel schedule, uh, as we get into the year. So I'm guessing that would happen in, in September. It, it may happen anytime, really up to, uh, the end of the calendar year. Uh, so, Michael Ann, I don't know if you have some thoughts to share with us, but I just wanted to, uh, start that discussion. Obviously, we're not going to talk about, uh, specifics on budget, uh, yet, but Michael Ann will be, uh, working on getting something to you that you can look at and, uh, we would drill down on an interim budget. And I would say that when we do, uh, it's going to be, uh, rough.
So just so you know, um, we had talked about uploading last year's budget, um, and, and we will copy pieces of the budget, mainly the revenue side. We'll try to forecast as best as we can with the information that we have. But the problem that we've got is we have a lot of projects that are getting ready to start probably July 1st. And so those projects weren't in last year's budget. So it's really important that we try to capture all of the projects that we're aware of, that we have signed grant agreements on and that we're ready to move forward. And so we'll try to incorporate all of that, um, things that were obligated contractually like union agreements, um, for those types of raises and things like that. So, you know, I can put that together probably in the next week and, and have a good draft for you, uh, to approve. We do still have to have the interim uploaded to DFA system by June 1st. So it's doable, but the important piece of that is having those projects in there because when we receive DFA approval as of July 1st, I mean, that is a legally binding document, even though it is a draft interim. So, um, we do want to incorporate those elements of the budget into the, into the interim budget. So that's kind of, after discussing it a little bit more, uh, we decided that that was a better approach than taking the easy way out and just uploading last year's to meet the June 1st deadline, so.
Sounds good. Are there any questions for Scott or Michael Ann? Alright. Looking forward to seeing the interim budget and what you guys come up with. Did you, did you have something to say, Laurie?
Nope, just that it sounds good.
Okay. Alrighty. Item C, deliberate enact on Resolution 2020-28, approving support to Raton Main Street for fiscal year 2021. Mr. Barry?
Mayor, Commissioner, uh, one of those, uh, revenue sources that we discussed in the budget discussion, uh, would be lodger stocks. And of course, uh, we are going to see a shortfall in lodger stocks just because lodgers, uh, have severely been restricted from operations and, uh, people have not been able to travel. And there again, as we said, uh, in the previous item, we don't know, uh, what the shortfall is going to be and we don't know how long that's going to persist. And, uh, this would normally be the time of year that we look at, uh, you know, what the plan is for applying lodger stocks, both the promotional items and non-promotional items. And so we have not, uh, brought that to you, but during this interim budget process, we will be, uh, talking about that. And so I want to prep the commission for that. However, to get a jumpstart on that, uh, we did bring a resolution to you regarding, uh, financial support to Raton Main Street and supporting a public-private economic development Main Street project. So, uh, in the resolution, uh, similar to what we have done before, there is a financial support that's expressed, uh, as we did before, that's in the amount of $40,000. And that would be a lodger's tax expense. Uh, now, there is another component to this, uh, public-private economic development partnership, and that is, uh, memorandum of understanding between the city, uh, and, uh, Raton Main Street. And so we do have, uh, the president of Raton Main Street on the phone. Uh, we do not have the up-to-date memorandum of understanding, uh, for the parties, for the commission to consider tonight. And that gives you an option. You can consider the resolution that we have in the packet now, or you can wait. I would anticipate at the next meeting, we'll have the memorandum of understanding and you could, uh, consider both of those at the same time. So, uh, Chris Valentini, I understand, is on the phone and, uh, is available to give a short presentation to the commission.
Alrighty. Chris, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Um, yes, we, uh, are working on the memorandum of, of, uh, understanding on New Mexico Main Street. We have a call out to, um, them in order to see if they want to go. Uh, more than likely, they, it will be a new memorandum of, uh, biannual, um, memorandum of, of, uh, understanding, um, so that we can continue to work, um, through New Mexico Main Street and with Raton Main Street and with, of course, the city of Raton. We totally, you know, we appreciate your continued support for Raton Main Street. Um, we, we just hope that, um, you can approve this, um, whether you approve the resolution tonight and then we present the memorandum of understanding on the 26th, what, you know, we are shooting for. And, um, just extending our, uh, our service to you and into our community, um, as we've been doing, um, all these past years. We would appreciate any support, um, just support that you, um, from the commission and, uh, just know that, uh, Raton Main Street will continue to provide all that we can provide. Um, we've, um, you know, bringing in grants, we're working on our economic vitality project that is, um, that's coming up very soon. Um, we're really pleased about that and we're just going to continue to help our downtown districts, our businesses and the city of Raton and all that we can do.
Alrighty, Chris. Yeah, we appreciate everything Raton Main Street does for our community and you guys have got a great program and you really have made some huge improvements and contributions to the city. So, uh, is there anyone else who'd like to make some comments at this time?
Well, I'll just second that, that, you know, we greatly appreciate the work. I think this, the, uh, I could easily speak for the whole commission that we all, all appreciate the work of Main Street, the whole city does. It's, you guys have done a lot of, a lot of work for us. Um, I am going to, uh, suggest I'd be inclined to postpone the decision, um, you know, and giving that verbal support, but just, uh, agree to, uh, address the memorandum of, uh, understanding at this same time as the resolution next meeting. I think that would be a better option.
Okay. Any, uh, are you going to make that in the form of a motion?
Sure, I'll move that we, we postpone the decision, uh, to act on Resolution 2020-28, um, till the memorandum of understanding is ready, hopefully by next meeting.
Okay, we have a motion?
Commissioner, talk, I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hey, Michael Ann, could we have a vote, please?
Mayor Protim Schuster.
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo.
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley.
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Mayor Sagada.
Yes. So motion has been passed to postpone till the next, hopefully the next meeting. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you very much.
We will do our best to have that fall over to Michael Ann prior to, in the agenda go vouch for the meeting on May 26th. And, uh, once again, totally appreciate all of you and all that you do for Raton.
Alrighty, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barry.
Thanks, Chris.
Hi, you're welcome.
Okay, item D, deliberate enact on Resolution 2020-29, authorizing and approving submission of a completed application for financial assistance and project approval to the New Mexico Finance Authority for refunding 2009 PPRF-2332 and PPRF-2333. Mr. Barry?
Mayor, Commissioner, um, this is in regard to, uh, three components of our electrical utility that are managed by Raton Public Service Company and what, uh, PPRF-2332 and PPRF-
As left.
-2333, uh, uh, reference are the financing of those components through New Mexico Finance Authority back in 2009. So the three components, uh, consist of, uh, the, uh, upgrades to the electric utility substation or the expansion that happened in 2009. And the principal amount, the original principal amount was about $1.1 million and some change. And, uh, then also, uh, the city and RPS agreed to, uh, purchase assets from Arkansas River Power Authority in their settlement with ARPA back in 2009. And that was, uh, a portion of the Worsilla unit, the generating unit, and then the Borough Canyon Transmission Line. And the original principal amount of, of both of those things combined, Worsilla and the Borough Canyon Line were, uh, $4.6 million and some change. Um, we bring this refunding action to you, similar to the action that we talked about with the Aquatic Center, uh, sometime earlier, generally because interest rates have declined enough, uh, to really save the city money, uh, by, uh, refunding this and refinancing those three with the principal amount that is left. So in your package, you see some of the terms of the refunding. I'll run through those, uh, real quickly. Um, we would look at a refunding action on a principal amount of, uh, 3.642 million and some dollars. Uh, the total cost would be 3.986 million dollars and, uh, that would include a debt service reserve of $343,000 and some change. The term would be 10 years, uh, would run through May of 2029, which is the existing term on, uh, those issues. So that would remain unchanged. The, this action is estimated during that 10-year period, uh, that it would save the city of Raton and RPS and specifically the ratepayers of Raton, $611,373. You see that as you go into, uh, the document on page two. And then if we go over to page three, we see that the, uh, interest rate proposed to us currently is, uh, a little higher than 1.27%. And we would save the money by reducing the current interest rate of, uh, 4.68%. So that is the basic summary of the action here, Mayor. I'll hold up there and answer any questions that you have. Michael Ann is available to answer questions. Uh, this is also working its way through the RPS form.
Any questions for Mr. Barry or Michael Ann?
At this time, I believe that, uh, making the change to save the money that we should have considered, this is Ron Chavez.
Absolutely, I agree, Ron.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-29.
I'll second this.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2020-29, authorizing and approving submission of a completed application for financial assistance and project approval to the New Mexico Finance Authority for refunding of 2009 PPRF-2332 and 2333. Is there any further discussion?
I just wanted to make one comment. Um, so the deadline to submit this to the finance authority is May 28th. So we'll get that submitted right away. The application will go to their June, uh, board meeting and then they'll make a recommendation on it at that time. So once it's been approved, then we'll actually bring an ordinance back to the commission. And so we'll have to introduce that. So we could be looking at August before this is all, maybe in August, September closing.
Okay. Did you all catch that?
Yep.
Great. Alrighty. Is there any other comments, questions? We have a roll call vote, please, Michael Ann.
Commissioner Chatterley.
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Schuster.
Yes.
Mayor Sagada.
Yes. Motion carries, thank you, guys. Item E, deliberate enact on purchase of chest compression system for Raton Fire and EMS. Mr. Barry?
Uh, Mayor, Commissioner, uh, we do have Chief Espinola and Chief Burke here tonight. Looks like Chief Burke is going to come forward and, uh, give the commission some, uh, information on the, uh, proposed purchase of chest compression system.
Cool.
Chief, come on.
Wherever he's got the mic, I guess.
There's no mic there.
There's no mic, I guess you'll have to use Michael Ann.
Mayor, Commissioner, uh, the CPR chest compression system is what we want to purchase is for the utilization of hands-free CPR from our personnel, whether it's on scene or in the back of our ambulance. Um, this, uh, this machine will utilize, uh, man-made technology, but also save on the safety of our personnel in the back while the ambulance is in motion. Um, the machine, once you press on, it calibrates to the person or the individual's chest and then you press start and it goes. Um, that way it frees up our hands for medications, oxygen delivery and so forth. Um, we're looking for this due basically to the safety of a moving ambulance in the back.
Cool.
It sounds like a great thing. Does it decrease, uh, the number of broken ribs on the patient or is that?
Uh, no, there's, there's still going to be, I wouldn't say it's going to decrease. There's still a possibility of it.
Right.
It is a machine versus man, um, hands. Uh, but it is taking the depth before it starts. It's going to take a depth pressure, a little bit of resistance, backup, wait for the user or the medic or the tech to press, um, start or go in the function and then it's just going to start going at a 30 to 2 ratio.
That's great.
And then it frees up a set of hands and it can trans, we can move it to, into the hospital setting and continue the procedure with uninterrupted CPR.
That's great.
Nice.
Um, we have used this two, three times, um, while we've had a machine on trial and the ease of you set it and you're seated while you're in motion to the hospital.
Cool.
So we've, we've tried it out. Unfortunately, we've had to try it out, but it does work and we've liked the progress and what we've seen out of the machine.
That's great.
Yeah. Any questions for Chief Burke?
So Commissioners, you see in the packet, uh, some, uh, pricing on this unit from, uh, various vendors. And as I understand, Chief, uh, the, uh, the, the best quote that we got was from a company, uh, Stryker and all in with, uh, battery charger, battery and external power supply. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, we're looking at $28,719.68.
Correct.
I think this is a, uh-
And that's for two units.
Oh, okay.
That's not just for one. That's two units of the compression system and the accessory pieces for those units.
Oh, cool.
That's great.
Alright. Well, that sounds even better.
And Chief, let's talk about, uh, the funding source on this.
So the funding source that, why we're pursuing this so much is the, uh, federal's going to reimburse us 75% and also the state, if they still have funds available, they'll, uh, pitch in 12.5%. So the cost of the city is 12, uh, 12 and a half percent of that total cost.
Nice. I like that. Any questions for either of the chiefs?
I'll move to approve the purchase of the chest compression system for Raton Fire and EMS.
I'll second it, this Jacomo.
We have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of the compression system. Is there any further discussion? Michael Ann, could we have a vote, please?
Mayor Protim Schuster.
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo.
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley.
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Mayor Sagada.
Yes. Thank you. Item F, deliberate enact on purchase of fire hose utilizing master price agreement with public procurement authority extended to qualified government members of the National Purchasing Partners LLC, DVA Fire Rescue GPO. Mr. Barry?
Mayor, Commissioner, I again would call on, uh, Chief Burke, uh, to kind of walk us through this. This is pretty straightforward, it's replacing, uh, a quantity of fire hose that we've, uh, utilized and I think, um, has some obsolescence to it. But Chief Burke, if you could walk us through this item, this proposal.
So the proposal in front of you, uh, Mayor and Commissioners, is to purchase, as stated, uh, fire hose for all apparatus, from small diameter to large diameter that we hook up to the hydrant to our engine. Um, when filling out this grant, it came, we came across numerous times that we have hose, um, at some points-
Correct, from my own chief.
-older than knee at 37.
Wow.
That we still pass, but we put to outlining fleet. But to stay up with, um, updated technology of hose and the aging of the, of our lifelines, literally, um, we need to make a large purchase of this hose and it's going to outfit all fire apparatus and ladder trucks that require hose. Um, and this particular model of hose is a 1.88 inch diameter hose. Um, with a trial test that we ran with this hose on a trial, um, we couldn't kink it. Um, and being for the, the length of hose that we use, the smallest little kink like in a garden hose, everybody can understand that, you get the smallest kink, your water pressure goes down tremendously.
Correct.
Um, so with that, that's one piece of the technology. Also, with this hose, we can actually gate down our flow rates from 120 PSI or gallons per minute off the, the end of the hose to 50 gallons per minute. So in the same cost, when we're flowing volumes of water, structure fire, we're actually decreasing our allotted usage in the big sense for not only for the fire, for the residents and the property, but as a city, um, for water usage.
Cool.
So that was a big piece on our main, on our attack lines. Now, we're still going to pull the volumes off our larger diameter hose, but as far as the attack lines go, which are primary hose, that is going to save us tremendously. Um, it's also going to save us on back injuries. We can go from two-person, um, holding attack lines if we need to, we can actually go to one person and manage very comfortably and easily at the appropriate pressures. Um, and it, not only was it the line staff that did it, but Chief and I both ran the hoses that day out there to, to verify. So it's not just taking the guys' work for it, it was us two.
Cool.
That's great.
So Commissioners, uh, between the original, uh, packet that you received, we worked on this quote, uh, from the vendor Municipal Emergency Services a little more to, to make sure we got the, the material that we needed. So there is a revised quote. Hopefully you all have that, just so there's, uh, not confusion on what we're considering here tonight. Uh, the, uh, the revised quote amount is $99,770. And that's what we're considering. The, uh, the quote with a different amount, uh, let's discard that. Am I correct, Chief?
Yes. And just to let you know a little bit on the financing portion of this, we actually wrote a grant and received monies for this in the sum of less than $100,000 with 10% matching. So the only cost out of our budget is 10% of the $99,000.
Cool.
That's great.
Absolutely.
Good job.
Yeah.
And being that the state funding is, they may take it back, so we're trying to, we're trying to get this ordered, pushed through immediately, right away.
Absolutely.
Definitely.
Any comments, questions for either Chief or Mr. Barry? Would entertain a motion.
I'll move to-
Hold on, this is, Mr. Chavez?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of said fire hose for the price of $99,770. Is there any further discussion? Michael Ann, vote, please.
Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Schuster.
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo.
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley.
Yes.
Mayor Sagada.
Yes, motion carries, thanks. Item G, deliberate enact on audit services recommendation for fiscal '20 audit. Item G, deliberate enact on audit services recommendation for fiscal '20 audit. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commission, in your packet, you see some documentation relating to this discussion. I'm going to try to explain it, and then the city clerk will clean up what I, you know, need cleaned up. But primarily, this would be in regard to the contracting of independent audit services for the upcoming audit season, and there is, of course, when we do procure those services, it is under the oversight of the state auditor. And so, one of the things that the state auditor is concerned about is when you use the same independent auditor for a certain, like, time, there's a concern over that degree of familiarity that you get with them, and so they like you to change auditors after a certain period of time, I believe it's six years. And our current auditor, Carr, Riggs, and Ingram, although they have changed their name several times in that six-year period, we've used them for six years. However, in this current period, it's pretty challenging to change audit firms. And so, we did submit a letter to the state auditor asking if we could continue to utilize the services of Carr, Riggs, and Ingram for one more year, and it's difficult to meet with an auditor. It's difficult to really accomplish a lot of this business. And you have the letters from us and from the state auditor's office, and they did approve our request that we could retain Carr, Riggs, and Ingram for one more year. You also see that proposal from Carr, Riggs, and Ingram, and the amount is the same as last year. It's $59,950, and then the applicable tax on top of that, really to do everything that we need for the financial statement preparation of the audit. And that would cover the utilities. It covers the federal single audit, and that covers our lodgers' tax audit as well. So, I'll hold up there. Michael Ann, you may have some additional comments, or if the Commission has any comments or questions.
The only comment I wanted to make is we do appreciate the state auditor's approval of this request. You know, it's not normally something that we would request, but as the city manager said, it is quite challenging, even under normal circumstances, to change audit firms. So, we do appreciate the approval to extend the contract for one more year. Now, granted, next year, we will proceed with our process to solicit another firm. The deadline to submit a contract is May 15th, so if we approve this this evening, then I would go online to the state auditor's portal and create the contract, and it's just an online process. So, we will be able to meet that deadline of May 15th.
Ready. Any other questions or comments for Michael Ann or Mr. Berry?
Neil, this is Commissioner Chavez. I think that this is the same amount as last year, that this is a win-win for us. Everything else has been going up. We keep it at the same price as last year. I think we just go with it.
Thank you. Yep, I would agree with that.
Yep.
Jacomo here, I'll make a motion to approve audit services recommendations for the FY20 audit.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the audit service recommendation for fiscal year '20. Is there any further discussion? Michael Ann, can we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Schuster?
Yes.
Mayor Sagata?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Item H, deliberate enact on bid award for Raton Municipal Cruise Field Airport Precision Approach Path Indicator, known as PAPI. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commission, this is instrumentation that, as implied in the name, provides some guidance to pilots flying into our airport. We are replacing the existing PLASI system with the PAPI system, and in your packet, you see a letter of recommendation from our consulting engineer, that's Molden Corbin. They've done the design on this and evaluated the bids. We did two bids, and you see the low bid submitted by Bulldog Energy Services. The...there is quite a difference between the engineer's estimate and that low bid, but the engineer has evaluated that and forwarded their recommendation to you. I would concur with their recommendation for award to Bulldog Energy Solutions in the amount of $57,082.50. Now, I would state that under normal circumstances, this would be funded through the Federal Aviation Administration Airport Improvement Program at 90% federal funds, 5% state funds, and 5% local funds. However, FAA has advised us that 100% of this will be funded with federal funds. We will not have a match required on this. I would also state that this would come out of our AIP allocation, and the money that normally would have gone to this would be then rolled over into our next priority, and we would start talking about the rehabilitation of taxiway B next. So, upon your consideration of the PAPI system here, I'll move to that and work with Molden Corbin, and we'll update you on rehabilitation of taxiway B.
All right. Thank you. Any questions or comments for Mr. Berry?
Jacomo here, I'll make a motion to approve a bid award for the Raton Municipal Cruise Field Airport Precision Approach Path Indicator.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the award, award to bid to Bulldog Construction. Is there any further conversation? Michael Ann, can we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Sagata?
Yes. Thank you. We have a big poppy now?
Well, we're going to have a poppy out there, and, you know, this is a visual approach aid, and so if you see the right color, you're on the right approach. If you're too high, you see a different color. If you're too low, you see then a third color. And I would also state, in regard to taxiway B, that's the taxiway for the crosswind runway, 725.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item I, deliberate enact on resolution 2020-30, budget adjustment number 13 for fiscal year '20. Michael Ann?
Mayor and Commission, in your packet is budget adjustment number 13. We have several line item adjustments, but I did want to mention that you'll see under the transfers out of the general fund, we're requesting an additional $4,102. We do have two microloan applications that still need to be considered. We had about $898 left in the fund that you originally allocated, which was $20,000. So, we are requesting an increase in that line item to be able to fund the remaining two applications. And then also, let's see, like I said, we have some line item adjustments. I've included the additional, and I think I'm going to have to make a change to this because the fire hose, the revised...
Oh, yes.
...amount on the fire hose, you'll see under the state grant that the amount I have listed was the original amount. So, I'm going to need to...hold on. So, I'm going to need to change that figure to the $99,770. And so, I don't have my calculator with me because I've got my phone up there, but...so what I'll do is I'll also have to adjust the supply line item, just so that that entry is in balance. So, if you're okay with me making those corrections, I'll do the math on that and adjust it so that it...the interest income will offset the additional funds from the supplies into the state grant.
So, it looks like it's another $3,200?
Is that what you came up with, 3,200?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, other than that, at a previous meeting, you did approve the creation of a new fund for our CDBG project. So, you'll see that we have the new line items and the new fund, which is Fund 357. That project is $825,000, and it has a $75,000 match that will come out of our gas tax, our street improvement fund. So, you'll see that transfer coming out of the street improvement into that new fund. And so, once we approve this this evening, I'll get with the bank this week to get the new account opened and get all of that ordered because we're getting ready to proceed with that project.
Cool.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments for Michael Ann? And you all caught the $3,200 difference in the fire fund?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Well, I will move to approve resolution, excuse me, 2020-30, budget adjustment number 13 FY20.
I'll second it. Jacomo?
As amended, right?
As amended, yes.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second to approve budget adjustment number 13 as amended for fiscal year '20. Any further questions? Could I have a vote, please, Mr. or Michael Ann?
Mayor Pro Tim Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Sagata?
Yes. Thank you. Item J, city managers report. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commission, I did conduct a pre-bid conference on the Raton Solid Waste Convenience Center project. We did have five contractors attend that conference, so they could get information and ask their questions in advance of submitting a bid. Sealed bids are due on May 19th, and we plan on bringing that to the Commission in our second May meeting for your consideration. There were five contractors present. It doesn't mean that all five are going to bid it, and it's not mandatory, so there actually could be other contractors that bid it and didn't attend it. But five contractors at the pre-bid is a good competitive environment for that project. So, we intend to talk about that here at the next meeting. Going back to the discussion of Main Street, I would say that...I'll talk about a couple of things here, but New Mexico Main Street is a division of the New Mexico Economic Development Department, and EDD announced on May 6th that the New Mexico Resiliency Alliance, in partnership with the New Mexico Main Street Program and the McCune Charitable Foundation, has awarded seed grants and matching funds for Main Street economic development projects. It was awarded to 12 New Mexico Main Street communities, and that includes Raton. It was awarded to Raton Main Street for our Small Business Sustainability Program. I don't have all of the facts and numbers for you, but that's, I think, a tribute to the success of our Raton Main Street program, and I would say that they're lining up matching funds. One of our local banks, Inbank, I think, has talked about providing matching funds to that as well to fund that Small Business Sustainability Program. With that stated, I would say that we have had a number of very successful short-term business support issues here in Raton. Certainly, in addition to Main Street, the Commission has supported small business, and I think that's been very successful. The federal funds through the CARES legislation, I think, has been very successful in Raton. Those are all short-term support issues. We look for, you know, working with the governor's office and the state leaders as far as the long-term support measure, which would be getting back to business. Now, you know, I think it's important that we protect the public health and safety, and so we're walking a fine line as to how do you protect public health and keep your local economy going and alive and vibrant. And so, I think we're...this month of May, as we're just getting into the summer season, we'll look for some clarification. I would just state, Mayor, I'll let you discuss this, but the mayor and myself have participated in a number of telephone conferences, and will continue to do that, working with leaders around the state, as well as representatives of the governor's office and the administration about where we're at. And we all realize the delicate balance between protecting public health, doing the right thing there, getting all of the protective measures in place, and getting back to business as well. So, very fine line that we'll make some judgment call on, and, you know, working with leaders in the state, and we'll try to answer questions. I think there is a...what we see at City Hall every day is a lot of questions with the public about what's coming up, what's going on, what's allowable, or what's restricted. And we are looking to the administration to help us answer those questions. But I think it has been a good partnership, and, you know, here you see a lot of support for that. Just moving on, I would state that we're hearing about a special session of the New Mexico Legislature in June. I don't know specifics of that. I've heard the second week in June, and they really have the task of evaluating and taking action on the state budget shortfall. So, I think a lot of local governments, specifically municipalities, that rely primarily on grocery receipts tax are going to have a budget shortfall, something we talked about here tonight. The state legislature, the state of New Mexico has got really a very significant budget shortfall that they're looking at, and they put out some guidance on that from some of their analysts. It depends on how an economic development looks going forward. Of course, there's not a lot of information on that either, so there's some guidance ranging from it's a bad problem to it's a really bad problem. And so, I don't think we're really looking to the state to help us here locally. We keep our eye on any federal potential for local government revenue replacement. That's very unclear where that's going, but I think we're in a defensive position as far as any funding that may come through the state. And so, you heard that from the chief here, that we really need to move along with grants that we may have put in place there. That really goes as far as any other program that we've got, the things associated with the airport, things associated with local government road funds, and capital outlay, and anything else. So, we're really looking at trying to protect all of those things that we've got, and the only type of protection is to move the project along, whatever that project is, try to get the funds obligated, and try to get the funds expended. So, we'll find out as we go through this special session of the legislature how we come out. I think we're in a fairly good place. The staff has really worked hard on that, but we'll find out more as we go along, and then we'll report back to the Commission. And that's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Berry. Just kind of piggyback off a couple of things Scott said with the meetings, with the mayors and the governor's staff. We are finding out that we are not the only ones that are frustrated. There are several frustrated mayors out there, but we're all trying to come to a solution that will be of the best for the public and for the communities. A couple of things to look forward to. Chief of Staff Beegman said there may be an announcement... Chief of Staff Beegman said there may be an announcement tomorrow by the governor, as early as tomorrow, about how we're proceeding forward. The, some of the gating numbers have started to trend back down, so that's a good thing. So maybe we will be able to kick things off. New Mexico was awarded $1.25 billion in the CARES project. And without stepping on toes or anything, we were basically kind of told, if you play the game, you'll probably get some help there. Is that fair to say, Mr. Barry?
I think that's fair to say. There's a lot of unknowns, but I think you want to take a cooperative posture here at this point. And so we hear from frustrated people here at City Hall, but we really need to work with the state leaders, the legislature, and the governor's office.
Yeah. And in regards to the special session and that, yeah, I think Mr. Barry hit it on the head. I believe they are thinking of coming in on the 10th of June, if I remember from the league, but don't quote me on that. Something to look forward, though, too, that was pointed out to us, next year may not be the worst of that with this shortfall. It may actually be fiscal year 2022 for the state, because at that time, some of these commitments this administration has made with non-reoccurring revenue take place. What are they going to do in 2022, especially with us being short already? So 2022 slash 23 is actually, we've got a ways to go before we recover from this. So those are some of the things that were brought out in the meeting I had with the league this weekend. Anybody else? Any other comments?
I'd like to say something, Neil.
Okay, go ahead, Ron. Okay.
I would like to encourage the entire city to go downtown, and congratulations to the graduating class of 2020. If you've been downtown since this morning, on all the poles, they have put up pictures of the graduating seniors for Raton. What a good-looking bunch of young adults that we have there. And I encourage everybody to go down and take the time to walk around or drive slow, and you can see every graduating senior on the poles downtown, and on First Street and Main Street. That's all I have to say.
Cool. Thank you, Mr. Chavez.
It does look nice.
Yeah. Ms. Chatterley, you have any comments?
No, I don't.
All righty. Commissioner Jacomo?
No comments here.
All righty. Seeing no other comments. Mayor Pro Tim, you're here tonight.
I'm good, yeah.
Yeah. So she's good, so seeing no other business or comments, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.